We got no coming up the weekend.
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started with our meeting and this has been rescheduled due to the fact that last Thursday we had some awfully tough weather around here and I appreciate everybody taking the time to come and be here tonight, so, thank you. Call the meeting to order and Commissioner Alderson's gonna do the pledge of allegiance and Robert's gonna do the invocation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the free and equal exercise of liberty in which stands one on the nation under God, in the people, in the liberty and justice of all.
Goodbye to him, Mr. President. Very sorry for using that word so thankful for this day that you've given us. Thank you to the patient watching over each one of us through this past week and bad weather, keeping us safe and keeping our family members safe. What we ask tonight as we go forward in this meeting, that all things discussed here are beneficial to all present, residents here in Mount Pleasant. And she asks that you continue to protect and watch over us, keep us safe. In his name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, roll call please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Bill White?
Here.
Mike David?
Here.
Eric Harvey?
Here.
And Willie Alderson?
Here.
All prayers.
All right, next we have is approval or correction of any minutes from the prior meetings and this was a study session of January the fourteenth and a regular meeting on January the nineteenth.
We had one typo in the study session, Loretta's name was spelled wrong, but we've corrected that, so unless there's anything else, we're ready for you guys to approve them.
Okay. Any other corrections noted?
Mayor, I'd like a motion to amend the study session January the fourteenth and a regular meeting January the nineteenth with a correction.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Number of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five, our awards, presentations, and appointments, the first we have is the Mount Pleasant Communication Committee.
Mayor, I haven't even had a chance to talk to you today since this, but Ms. Granberry has, is recommending Sandra Bullock, is that correct?
Sarah Bullock.
Sarah, that's what I had written down, but I said Sandra, Sarah Bullock, yeah.
I can remember Sandra Bullock too.
That's on TV.
Yeah. She, she knows who's gonna get it.
Sandra Bullock?
Uh huh, yeah. About sixty. It's just something, doesn't matter.
I thought you were a couple years behind me.
All right, any other changes that we need to that?
No, we just need to vote.
Okay. Everybody's had a chance to turn their names in, so.
The last appointment for this committee.
That's right, I'll entertain a motion that we approve.
I'm moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Number of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Mount Pleasant Housing Authority, and this is to add Lance Boyd to replace Jeff Quark, is that not correct?
Correct, yes. That was the request of the Housing Authority.
That their request. Any comments, questions about that? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
Who do we accept the Housing Authority?
Okay, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. C is the Mount Pleasant Industrial Development Board, Dr. Michael Tyler, Edley Edwards, and Jeff Knox. Any comments, questions about those votes? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Again, a number of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number six, completion review of unfinished business from prior meeting?
There is none, Mayor.
All right. Monthly report from the mayor, I'm gonna be real brief, but I mentioned this at our work session, but our bond rating, thanks to a lot of hard work by a lot of people here, got raised from an A two to a double A minus, which puts us at stable with a nice fund balance and money to operate. Been a long time since we've heard that in this community. Airport, and I noticed Eric still got this with him, I made the comment and we just received this through TASP, which is a Tennessee Aeronautical System Plan, that they have to have for all of the airports in Mount Pleasant Municipal, or Mount Pleasant, Murray County Regional Airport generated thirteen point nine million dollars in the year 2019.
And that's kind of an annual thing, Eric had asked me that earlier, it's not a one-time thing.
No, that's every year.
Yeah.
You're just usually almost a full calendar year behind, because they have what they have to do. And I've received, and I know the number of the employees of the city have received phone calls regarding the trash and ice and salt and everything we had last week, I'll be the first to take the heat for that. I just didn't feel like it was safe to have people out on trucks trying to pick up trash. We had almost what would have been a just horrific accident as it was on dry ground some months ago, and I know it was inconvenient, but it was purely a matter of safety. And I noticed they were out running as hard and fast as they could go today, so I'll be the first to take the heat for that, because that was a, just didn't, nobody's life's worth that, I'm sorry.
The county was also closed all week.
Yeah. So. Anyway, it is what it is. Also, Kate, have you passed out, we received, finally received that water report back from MTAAS?
Oh.
Flood report.
The flooding, I have not, but it's on my desk to do that with. The reason I hadn't passed it out is because that one is specific to Brookside and Mockingbird.
Right.
And he's still gonna submit for the Cooper and Main Street, and I was gonna try and send them both, if the delay continues, I'll send one at a time, but I was trying to send them both together.
Just let everybody know, finally?
Since July, we finally have that back, and it clearly points to the middle school problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That y'all are addressing or trying to.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's all I've got, number eight is monthly financial and budget report. Ms. Loretta?
I think you got it in your packet, it was mailed in. It gets lost again. We got confused, oh, the, again, as the mayor pointed out, we did, our bond rating went up two, two steps, and that is significant, and we did open those bids, and those will be, we just signed paperwork today, and so we're moving forward with that, and we'll be, have some substantial savings in interest over the thirty years. And our bonds were very competitive with other cities our size, and even some of the bigger cities, so we should be always very grateful that that happened that way. January, our expenditures was on track where they should be, and at this point in the year, the only exception that was State Street Eight and the wastewater, because those do have those big projects ongoing, so those will actually change as the year goes forward. Have any questions, do you might have any questions over the reports? I think you got a full set.
Yeah. Any questions?
With everything that's going on in Texas, and this may be something we talk about at a later meeting, but in regards to the power system, how is our, like, are our rates jumping up like theirs are doing? You know, because of the demand?
Powers are governed by TBA.
TBA.
Okay.
And so TBA does a pretty good job of being able to keep those as stable as you can, because they are power dependent, and that, that affects, that affects our rates more than anything in our area. All I can say is I just, I just praise our folks at the electric system of here, and I'm personally on federal electric home, and the last time we had an ice storm, we were without power for over a week, we, it blinked three times. So I think that the fact that we still have electricity during all the cycles of snow is a really good testament to our folks at the electric system, that they have got the right of ways cleared out and things that we didn't have that, and we didn't have what they had in Texas.
Yeah.
Mount Pleasant Power, Mayor, they also had a tree and line to cut, you know, cut trees if they had to.
Yep.
And they go out in all kinds of ways.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Very thankful for them.
Texas has got something very unique going on down there as it is, trying to privatize, so to speak, that grid, because you really only had three grids across the US, and they created the fourth, and it's not very well supported.
Hopefully they'll have it turned it out by what year, thirty five, and make their colors go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Anyway, it's a mess, I hate it for those folks. Any other questions or comments about the financial and budget report? Being none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion to amend the financial budget report as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number nine, monthly report, C.D. Manning.
It's really more of what Mayor and Loretta have already talked about, we saved over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in saving by refinancing the original debt. Our true interest rate for going forward is one point six, which is just incredible. And I'm really proud of staff to be able to get us to where we are with this AA minus rating, it's kind of something that Mount Pleasant hasn't seen, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. Now, we did get all the paperwork today, literally at two o'clock, so this is gonna be in front of you again in March, just to see all the paperwork, we signed everything this afternoon at two o'clock, and we'll be moving forward with the purchase of the Flipper Truck, the streets we've been working on bond design, so you'll start seeing us moving forward on several, several big projects that you knew were part of that, and then, you know, just acknowledging the weather that we've had, and a lot of complaints about not being able to do side streets, and why don't we have equipment, well, because it happens once every eight to ten years, it's just, it's not something you, we do have a plow that attaches to the front of a truck, it doesn't do nearly as well as putting Steve on a backhoe, and he can do pretty well, but there's no way we'll get to all the side streets in a situation like that, so. We did have staff that came in that didn't have to come in, and took payments and answered the phone, and we're trying to, we all go to at least a lunch and something like that, but all in all, considering, I think it went pretty well.
Absolutely.
Let them know we appreciate you.
Yes, please do. Any other comments?
And we did, one more thing we did do was that we did postpone the penalty, putting on penalties.
Yes.
Yeah.
And cutoffs.
Well, no, not cutoffs.
Cut off.
Soon.
Cut off till this week anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
But just the penalty, so that if somebody could not get here, you know, ice storm, they had to four o'clock this afternoon to get those payments in before any penalties would be added.
Think that was a good call. All right, number ten, special reports from other departments or committees, wastewater liaison, bars design, and I noticed we've got something in our.
We should all have that in your packets. The first project of the five there is completed, because it's completed, we're actually applying for the county CDBG grant, the county's meeting was rescheduled for tomorrow night, so I will be there to answer any questions about that, and hopefully we can move forward with that grant. Through a trunk line rehabilitation, not any change because of weather, they still have some repairs they need to make in the pipe before they can do the wrapping it. Rainy streets, sewer improvements, I want to let you know that I have talked to Ms. Luper, the owner of the property, that we need to either buy or have an easement, and she's verbally told me that she's gonna sell it to us, and so now Cory and I are working towards the title and figuring out exactly who the heirs are to make sure that that's done correctly, and that's moved quite a bit in the last week.
Awesome. Good deal.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Then wastewater treatment plant improvements, the big news is that our staff is back that's been out with COVID for over two months, and so we can sit down with the engineers and have these meetings on their design work that's about a hundred percent complete, but we all have to look at it together, to give you an idea of how much work that is, to review their drawings, it's gonna be a full eight-hour day meeting to go through everything that we're doing, so that's gonna happen in the next two, two, three weeks. And then the wastewater plant improvements, we're, the bids are ready, the bids are in front of USDA for review, and then it'll come back to you when the bid is awarded, and I didn't tell you this, Mayor, but Doug has retired with USDA, and so Vance Hamilton has taken his place, and a lot of people familiar with him, he's been doing it forever, but doing it in Nashville and north of there, he's coming by tomorrow for us all to meet him, but that's, that's the new person that we're dealing with at USDA. That's the latest update there?
Okay. No, there's nothing required on that either.
No.
Gas system.
And there's no report on gas, everything's just fine.
Okay, with the exception.
Except the prices go up.
Which all we're doing is passing it on. All right, number eleven, new business, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-three, this is a first reading, an ordinance to amend Title VII, Chapter Five of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to private alarm systems.
Mayor and Commissioners, this, the changes that have been recommended by the police department are changing from a fiscal year to a calendar year to make it easier to handle, and then rather than having residential and commercial, it's residential and other, because we didn't have a category for like churches and stuff, other things are just minor language changes. Missed anything, Michael?
No.
So, and I don't anticipate this changing between first and second reading, but as you said, this is just the first reading.
All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Who do we accept, twenty, twenty-one dash ten sixty-three as presented?
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. B, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-four, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance to amend Title Nineteen, Chapter Three of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to gas.
Mayor and Commissioners, this change, the really only relevant change here is we put in here what our deposit procedure is, what we, what we ask customers to pay as far as a deposit, which is two and a half times anticipated use.
Right.
And prior ordinance just said we had the ability to ask for a deposit, but this specifies what the practice is.
Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion in favor, ordinance two oh one dash ten sixty-four.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. C, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-five, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance to amend Chapter Five, Title Four of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code with respect to the occupational safety and health program.
And Mayor and Commissioners, the state TOSHA requires us to adopt this plan, we've actually sent them what we have in draft for them to say this is what we want you to pass, we've not heard back from them, and so there may be changes between now and the second reading in March, but we need to have something that is approved, last time we did this was quite, quite some time ago. How many?
Seven years.
Seven, yeah. Probably time, yeah. Any questions, comments? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like a motion in favor, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-five.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. D, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-six, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance amending Title Fourteen, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter Two, zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant, of, for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning a property from neighborhood to commercial, see into light industrial IL.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is something that was approved by the planning commission in last month's meeting, and so it would have to pass by ordinance to change, this is where the Tru-Rail site is, at the corner of Greenwood and First Avenue, it's not about the business, it's about the land, but I can tell you that when Tru-Rail came here, they did not anticipate doing any manufacturing, but what they have learned is that they're able to manufacture, manufacture the tools that they need at about a tenth of the price, and it's gonna be a small fabrication shop within this. Now, you, once you've rezoned it, you're rezoning it for future use too, but that, that is why the, this rezon is in front of you.
Kate, everybody on the planning commission voted in favor, correct?
Yes, it wasn't unanimous, unanimous vote.
And I've heard from a number of the residents over there, because I live over there myself, and once they understood what we were doing, everybody seems to be fine with it, I mean, it's what's going on over there now, anyway.
Right, well, I mean, Bill, I mean, it's like what you said, you know, during the study session, there was things going over there, on over there in the face that shouldn't even been going on.
Once it's going on, it's so hard to stop.
It is, but I never did get money, or I guess the difference between the two, but.
What's lagged after all?
Yes, but I did, I did look it up, and from what I can see, you know, it's used as an assembly plant that are, that are operated so that noise, odor, dust, and glare are such an off-reading, are completely confined with an enclosed building, and so that right there tells me, you know, it's not gonna affect the neighborhood whatsoever.
Right.
Now, I know that Cory will want to speak towards, before you rezon property, what you need to be considering when you make that decision.
Yeah, we went through that at the study session.
All of you, by the time you are not Commissioners, will have it memorized, hopefully. But I, you all have that in your packets from several towns before, I can go over them again, if y'all, if y'all have any questions, we can talk about it, but.
I think questions is probably more appropriate, because we've heard this.
Heard the speech, yeah. And I'm sorry about not sending you that, I forgot about.
You're good, you're good.
I have it here, you wanted to see all of it?
I'm sure that right there is probably the same.
Gotcha.
I was just curious, you know, what could be done over there, what could be done, so.
Now, you know that in general, we're not trying to do anything for this particular landowner, we're doing it based on what's adopted in the zoning code in best use, and it's not giving anybody something that, something favorable, that's kind of her point, so you don't just rezone because somebody's asked, it has to fit what we're trying to do and the growth of our city.
But it's like I said last week, you know, you couldn't ask for nobody to clean up the property, no better than what they have.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, my only concern was, you know, doing it, and then, you know, if they sell it, and then what's coming, coming down the road, but according to this, you know, you know, it won't affect it.
So we'll entertain a motion.
And Robert did go into great detail about that specific point, because you are rezoning the property.
Mayor, I'd like a motion in favor, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-six, on the recommendation of our planning commission, and also this will not affect the surrounding community.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank y'all. One more. C, or E, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-seven, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance amending Title Fourteen, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter Two, zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning a property from low-density residential R one to high-density residential R three.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is right at Burst Avenue and North High Street, and they're wanting to do, make townhomes and do places and things like that, that big concern that was brought up at the planning commission, maybe even the study session, if I'm remembering quite, is how narrow the road is, and all of that is gonna have to be addressed when they come back to the planning commission with a site plan, so right now it's just whether or not this commission feels they agree with the planning commission that going from just the low-density residential to the high-density residential is good and fits the plan for our city and our growth going forward along First Avenue.
And were they unanimous that the planning?
There was, it was four to one.
Yeah, four to one.
And, and since the, these two properties, one was denied.
Yeah.
And since these two properties are owned by the same people, I don't know if that one vote was related to the other vote, but this was a four to one vote.
This, no, the one vote was on the other props, I mean, the, um.
That's correct.
So was this unanimous?
This one was unanimous, this is a single vote.
Yeah, because I voted against the other one, this one was unanimous, but all.
Okay, so this, the other that involved the storage.
That's correct.
That's correct.
I'm, I'm sorry, I misspoke then, so this one was unanimous as well.
Right, and the reason why that we came up with this unanimous, unanimous move is because we, it could be a good thing and maybe not, but in order for them to put townhouses or anything there, and we was talking about that road, because now it's closed off, the state would have to open it back up before they could even do that, back to the main highway, so it could be a benefit if it gets done, but if that don't happen, they still won't be able to put townhouses there anyway, but we did agree to do it.
I appreciate that clarification.
This has nothing to do with storage, you know.
No, no.
That's the one that was denied.
No, that's the one that we, that I denied, yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
And there were people here to speak on this, that's what it was.
Yes.
Well, I mean, that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten sixty-seven to raise the, uh, ordinances from R one to R three, due to the planning commission's unanimous efforts there, and the benefits that it'll bring to that part of our community.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? Have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I may see the site plans for that.
Mm-hmm. Weird.
Because what's gonna happen is, it's gonna create the need to do something with that street, and it needs to be known.
Right, and we make it clear to the investors that it was.
So to speak, almost seems like it, doesn't it?
It's crazy.
All right, we got a motion second, we did vote on it, right?
Yeah.
All right, F, resolution twenty twenty-one dash four, resolution authorizing city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to execute and enter into amendment number one to its agreement for engineering services for the downtown revitalization and economic development project Phase One with CT Consultants, T dot P N one two six 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 zero point zero zero.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is the longstanding, ongoing project that's still in engineering right now, but because of us being able to use some of the bond money, we are gonna be improving the infrastructure as we're digging up the road, which is absolutely the appropriate thing to do, so there's some additional engineering, and that's what's been added to the contract.
Yes, it needs to be done, because I'm afraid when we open up that ground, it's Pandora's box.
What was it, they already planned cake when they dug, dug in over there?
Bunch of valves.
No, no, what was?
Here on Main Street or on Halon?
No, on my, on the, it was in front of mine, I think it would play. Yeah, yeah.
I've got a piece of it in my office, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
A wood pipe.
Wood pipe.
Oh my God.
Like, over a hundred years old.
Yeah. Wow. That was even more the need to get these bonds issued quickly as we did.
Yeah.
What we saved in the refundings, three hundred and fifty thousand, so.
But do we know that when, I guess, we'll start work on this or whatever, breaking one, breaking ground?
The next deadline is all the engineering has to be done, which is not a problem, and approved by the state by July first of this year. That's our next deadline, once that's done, we can go out for bid, and realistically, if we get started in the fall, I would be extremely happy. We move slow, states even slower, federals even slower, so if we could start in two thousand twenty-one, I would be happy, but I don't, I can't say for sure. Our biggest deadline right now is to have the engineering done by July first.
We share everything.
And approved, not just.
We share everything that you've done, you know.
It's going on.
You know, the ground, you know.
Yeah, we gotta keep it moving forward. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion in favor, resolution twenty twenty-one dash four.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a number of seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash five, a resolution in support of application to hazard mitigation grant program relief fund, or grant fund.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is specifically working with Office of Emergency Management from Murray County to apply, we pay for a generator for our water plant, we have a wonderful water plant, and we have no backup electric service, if something happened right now. If something happens right now, so it's obviously extremely needed, and is it retarded $500,000, I can't remember the amount, but it's quite, this is not a small amount of money. So basically, you're giving the mayor permission to sign the application, to apply for this money.
Again, we'll get a grant for that, or for, what is it, 80?
Yeah, our portion...
Our portion is 12.5%.
Okay, so it's not bad at all.
Kind of like FEMA grants.
So, and we need it, Lord knows. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Move that we accept Resolution 2021-5.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have some seconds, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2021-6, a resolution authorizing the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to execute and enter into a subscription agreement in supporting documents in writing with due solutions for a subscription to provide online services for its citizens.
So Mayor and Commissioners, we brought this to you last month, and we've done some due diligence, and there is not any way that we're going to find any kind of a software program that's going to handle police fire, financial, and building codes. And the only department within the city right now that is not supported with its own software is building and codes. So it's very difficult to go back and look at history, and this is going to get us way above to the next level where we need to be. And you'll be able to look at everything that's been done. Builders will be able to work with us and get all their permitting done online, and it's going to create a great resource for us going forward, which is what we've done in every other department, where in the past, we just lose information, there's no record of transactions, and this is something that we highly recommend to get the building codes software where it needs to be. Well, they don't have any, so this will get us started where it needs to be.
Any other comments or questions?
So will you have to scan all the older documents and upload those into the system?
As far as the entry, yes, there will be a lot of data entry. They must have, because that was an additional cost for the service to provide, so we chose to do the data entry by ourselves. Along with getting documentation, so and so forth. Their implementation process is going to help guide us in the direction, have the platform where it's, where it should be, once we get that data and stuff in. So it will be our manual data entry, but we chose to do that because it's a cost-saving measure.
Unfortunately, prior to 2016, there's not much data. There's not, there's not a lot of records, no explanation for that, if it is what it is, but what we're saying is from here on out, there's going to be data. It'll be stored in the cloud, and it can't go away.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept Resolution 2021-6.
We got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of HVAC at the Community Center.
Mayor and Commissioners, we did have one valid bid. We're asking you to defer this until the April meeting, because we want to go back and take a look at, we bid to replace exactly what we already have. And we've heard from too many people that say, if you do exactly what you already have, you're going to continue to have the same problems, where one room's freezing, one room's hot. And so we don't want to do this the wrong way. If we need to do it differently and have engineers take a look at it, we want to have the opportunity to do that. And I'm asking for April, because March meeting is three weeks from tomorrow, and I just don't know that we'll get all that done that quickly.
Yeah, I'd totally support that. Let's get this, if we're going to do this, and it's not going to be cheap, do it right.
I need to make a motion to defer.
Defer it to April, and the reason that we're having to deal with this is it wasn't built right to begin with. So I think this is the best way to do it, but yes, we're asking for a defer until the April meeting.
All right, then, do we have a motion to defer this?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to defer HVAC at Community Center till next, till April.
Have a motion, do we have a second? We got seconds, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. J. Approval of pest control bid, which you have in front of you.
We should all have it in front of you. Loretta has spent a considerable amount of time going through it to make sure there's not something that we're missing, because one is considerably less than the others. But we've gotten the business license, we've gotten everything that we've asked for, and insurance, the bug-out, termite, and pest control appears to be the lowest and best bid.
I looked them up online, just to see some reviews, and they were four and a half out of five stars on Google, you know, with around 50 reviews. So I mean, I feel a little bit of that, you know?
I also, I looked up the state on the, because they are incorporated, and they are in...
Good standing, it's important, good, thank you for doing that.
I think they're just trying to get the business, I don't, I can't explain how much, why they're so much less.
I can't explain how they'll make it.
Our benefit, that's what matters.
But, you know, it appears to be everything...
All right, do we have a motion to accept bug-out?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve bug-out for test control bid.
Have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Kay, approval of splash pad concrete? Yes.
I guess we have one, is there, is there, I guess, a reason? Because I mean, if somebody votes no, they might have something, you know, that...
Well, I just see reliable as five, and he does a lot. You know, we want somebody good. We don't necessarily need the lowest bid, because I just heard from one of our workers here that, you know, you don't want mousetraps, the bug traps out everywhere, we want somebody going to do a good job. I don't know about bug-out, but I know reliable is good, and I looked online, it's a 5.0. You know, I'm just saying, no, it's a bug-out, he might be the cheapest, but is he the best? Is that what we need?
And I think one of the things that we would have to do as a city, there had to be a reason we didn't go with the lowest bid, and we want the lowest and best, but we'd have to have a reason. And Laura spent a good part of the day trying to figure out if there's something that we're not aware of, and...
But I'm sure, you know, I guess you, or I guess some of the other members here, you know, if they see something that's not being done right, it could be brought up to you.
Absolutely.
And it is, it is a, what we did bid was one year with additional two years, and are optional. So if we did go with them and decided at the end of the year that they weren't, weren't, you weren't happy with them...
Or they're not providing the service that they said they would in their bids.
I was getting ready to say, there will be a contractual agreement that says you are going to do X, Y, Z, and if you don't do X but do Y and Z, you are in violation of that contract.
And there's a few of us that don't like to see bugs, so we'll let you know.
And so...
And I think, I believe.
Really, yeah, because reliable does a whole lot for our community.
Yeah, very active in the community.
Absolutely, very active. All right, we've had that pass?
Yes.
So splash pad concrete?
Unfortunately, we did not receive any bids, and that's after Bedford calling so many people to get bids. But thanks to Commissioner Alderson, she gave us a name and a card of somebody that we've learned did Muletown Rex Splash Pad, did Franklin, City of Franklin Splash Pad, and Bedford's reached out to him. He's going to come by tomorrow, and we may have somebody that's very interested in talking to us about doing concrete.
Defer it to March.
We didn't get any bids, so we're just saying it dies.
Right now, I should...
But I want to explain to you that there's a light at the end of the tunnel, possibly, that...
Thank you.
Yeah.
But Mr. Music, I guess, does a lot of stuff he did.
No, he was on there, we contacted him as well.
I called him personally.
Is there racing, we don't...
Maybe the plumbing components, or I don't know what it is, but...
I had show and tell for a month prior to we asked bids, and people were offered the opportunity to come by the Community Center and look at what I had, what needed to be done, and I called Walter two or three times.
I can, I know just enough about this to be real dangerous. But that's a certain type of concrete that has to be used for that, so that it's not so slippery. And that may be the problem, you have a certain type of people getting a bid on it, because it's not just going out there and putting the form up and throwing stuff in the ground because of the safetyness that has to be in that splash pad.
And it's a recirculating system, so it's going to be...
Right, it's got to have a system underneath it and the components too, without it crushing them too, so...
Well, this, this particular person that Ms. Alderson gave us the name for, he has worked with, he's been a subcontractor for Vortex, that's where we purchased all of our plumbing from. So we're hoping that that's going to be a really good relationship. I think he's going to be here tomorrow, is that right?
I think it's fantastic.
But Bedford's already talked to him at length.
Will we have, I guess, a guarantee that it'll work or whatever?
I think anytime we get in any kind of a contract...
Yeah, it's contractual. And we got to make sure it's contractual, because, so you got, we've got grants, grant money. So you better make sure, we got to make sure we're following, checking every box.
And that's why a lot of people won't bid on it, because they don't know how to do all of that.
Yeah.
It's not just like, just pouring concrete.
Yeah. Very unique. All right, so we don't need any action?
Really no action, I just wanted to give you that update.
Yeah. All right, L. Mount Pleasant Power System Traffic Signal System at Pope Lane and Highway 243. I have a letter here that I am going to sign, provided this passes, and I feel pretty sure it will, that says that the city agrees to pay the appropriate charges under the TVA rate. Those charges being the estimated monthly facility charge, the $1,520, and estimated monthly energy charge of 40. Just for your information.
And we'll have to change the date on that, obviously, since we lost a week, Mayor. But so all of you are aware, I told L, I didn't think he needed to be at the meeting tonight, since he spoke to it at the study session, but you're basically committing that they will do all of the work, they will own it, they will maintain it. And it's something we can't do, because we couldn't maintain it. But as the mayor said, it's 1,500 plus a month in perpetuity. It's about $18,000 a year that we will pay as a city to have that traffic signal there.
And it's something that's been needed for a while.
And it does say on here that this is just the street light, and it's not the striping and pavement markings, and we're really hoping we can get the state to help us with that. So you're voting to allow the mayor to sign this letter?
And don't expect it overnight.
No.
The state moves at a nail's pace at best, particularly T.DOT.
But at least, you know...
Would later move it.
If you love them long enough, they do it, we got the crossing up there, but it just had to keep it up.
Took two years.
Yeah, but we all kept bugging them too, and didn't give up, because I mean, you know, they...
But, you know, like, representatives, you know, they might come up with some pressure, I don't know. But again, like you say, you know, the state...
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Mount Pleasant Power System for the Traffic Signal System at Pope Lane and Highway 243.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a second, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
And so you all know that power system will come back after they get a full, a final bid to say it's either lower than they thought or higher than they thought, and at that point, we can...
Get a good number here.
Was that not both street lights included in that? Was we not?
No, that's just Pope and Zion, Pope and Zion and Main Street, sorry. This is not the downtown one.
Okay, because I thought he talked about the downtown.
We did talk about it, and we'll be coming back to you on that one. He needs eight months or so in between each one, because they're very costly to put up, and I told him we're at least 18 months away from needing this one down here. So he'll be back in front of you on this one right here, for sure.
Actually, we talked about both of them.
Yeah, we did.
And if you remember, Vice Mayor, the one for downtown is going to be more ornate because of the work that we're doing down there.
Be more decorated.
ADA compliant, et cetera.
Mayor, I would like to say one thing, I'd like to thank you, Vice Mayor, fellow commissioners, and of course Kay, for everything that you've done to try to push to get the traffic signal up that way. I really do appreciate it.
I know it's a priority for a lot of people.
Yes, that's the law.
All right, sounds good.
Did they vote on that? Yeah, it was unanimous, okay, I'll make sure.
Yeah, it was unanimous. We have nobody signed up to speak. So with that being said, Vice Mayor, anything to add?
Oh, I like to thank my police department for monitoring my kids, because they were flying down the hill the other day.
Good.
Appreciate them doing that. They weren't my kids, but you know, our kids in my personal mind, but you know.
Their radar and objective was great, they were 30 mile an hour slitters.
They kayak everything out.
I know, I was like, hey, can I? I can get you the trash can top, I'm going down that hill on a trash can top.
I can't say a word. I can't say a word.
Luckily, there's no video, right?
Well, the year before, I mean, the last time it snowed and the truck came through there and cleaned the hill off, I thought I would have killed them, the kids, they was like, they got rid of our hill, and we can't, I was like, okay, I want to get out of my drawers.
That's what I was just getting ready to tell on my own self. I used, I've heard stories, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, thinking there's not video of that.
There is some videos of that.
No, there was no video. I'll never forget, it was David McGaw and Mark Brown and myself, and we cut it on up on the corner of Fairview and Washington, and went down just a little bit right there where the Ross's lived in that house, and cut that one on. And I will never forget this to the day I die. Charles Dale, which was, Mike, you probably remember, was a police officer here forever, and he pulled us over. And he said, "Boys", said, "Y'all need to go on back up there and cut them water, their fire hydrants off." Mark Brown looked over and said, "Charles Dale, we ain't got no monkey wrench." I will never forget it to the day I die. So what did he do? He followed us right up there, watched us cut them off, and said, "Boys, go home, I know where you live." Mike, you got anything? Ms. Willie, anything?
Yes, I just want to thank the Fire Department for helping this guy that needed to go to dialysis. He couldn't get off his porch because of the ice and snow, and they did a good job. And I just want to appreciate, or thank the Fire Department, Philip, thank y'all so much for helping him.
Yeah, police and fire, our first funds were out, and others, we thank them.
And the Police Department, I'm sure they did your thing. Yeah, we got a good little, they take care of our citizens, and I'm very appreciative of all, what all y'all do here. Y'all do a lot more than I think a lot of citizens realize.
Anything? Yeah, I'm also thankful to Officer Odom, saw that he was very helpful this week, or last week in a situation. And Steve, very thankful for him to come out when it warmed up. They put a stripe on the curve there at Gray Lane. It's needed it for a while, bus driver told me, hey, cars, yeah, cars are coming across the line, and I'm trying to go through the curve, and they're coming over on my side. And so I...
And Steve thought the bid was tomorrow night, that's why he's not here tonight, but we'll catch that.
Tell him thank you for us at the middle school, we're very appreciative of that as well.
All righty, I don't have a thing, I've already sitting my feelings. Got a motion, second? All those in favor? We're done, thank you everybody for coming. Be safe, there still are some spots.